Like to call the meeting order, please. Roll call vote, please.
Order.
Councilmember Chung? Here. Councilmember Power?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Mayor Kotan Pogunkoy?
Here.
And Mayor Davies?
Here.
Everyone is present. Thank you.
Thank you. If we could all stand, our invocation tonight will be given by Pastor Billy Keith from the Tehachapi Nazarene Church.
Let's pray. Father God, we are just so grateful to be here this evening. Father, we ask that you will just be here. We know you are here, and we ask that you will be with all of the business here at hand. Father, we pray that you will be with those who are speaking. We pray for all of the decisions that are to be made. We ask for your wisdom and guidance, and we give you praise and glory in your son's name. Amen.
Amen. If you can all step, stand, remain standing. Phil, would you offer the pledge, please?
Salute.
Pledge.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'm going to turn some time over to our community engagement. Mr. Keiberg, please.
Good evening, Mayor Davies, council. We've got a couple of things that we'll bring to you tonight. So I get probably the best job because I get to acknowledge different things that are occurring in our community and recognize different groups. And being a retired first responder, I'm really excited about this. This week is National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, and after this brief presentation, I'm going to have you, ask you to consider proclaiming this week in Tehachapi National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. So the second week of April annually, public safety agencies across the United States recognize the hard work, dedication, and sacrifice made by these employees. Twenty-four hours a day, three hundred sixty-five days a year, public safety telecommunicators are working and managing nine-one-one call centers across the country. At the Tehachapi Police Department, we have five individuals who are specially trained and assigned to respond to the emergency needs of the public. They help manage some of the most terrifying and stressful moments of our community members' lives. The public safety telecommunicators, referred to as dispatchers by some, are the lifeline for not only the public, but our police officers in the field. They are the ones that listen for emergency radio traffic from an officer in distress and relay the information on to others so they can respond and render aid. Public safety telecommunicators are the unsung heroes who provide calm during the storm. In addition to the five personnel assigned to these duties on a full-time basis at the Tehachapi Police Department, we also have two additional staff members who are trained and have worked these assignments for many years. And before I invite Carrie Anne, Chief, is there anything that you'd like to add?
Yes, Keith, thank you. I would just like to reiterate what Keith has said and just discuss how important the communications dispatchers are. When you call for public safety, that's the first person you talk to, and not only just for the members of the public, but for the officers. When you're involved in a critical incident, that's the person who's your lifeline on the other end of that radio, and then sometimes that is all you have. And up here in Eastern Kern, we are the only twenty-four-seven fully functioning agency that takes medical calls, police calls. We take calls for the county when they're not able to staff their station. We also take public works calls, so, and handle customer service at the front counter. And I will tell you, I would put this group of communications dispatchers up against anybody anytime, and I'm proud to be their chief.
And I'd like to invite Carrie Anne Ritchie, Communication Supervisor with the Tehachapi Police Department, to come forward. She has something she'd like to share as well. Carrie Anne?
Thank you, Keith. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me.
Thank you for being here.
Two minutes is hardly enough time to say enough about what our dispatchers do for our community. As she said, we're twenty-four-seven, and being that we are the hub, we are the only twenty-four-seven dispatch center on the mountain, so we get all the calls coming in for all the areas. We have five dispatchers, as Keith said, and last year alone, they took approximately over eight thousand calls for service. And two thousand fifty-four of those were nine-one-one calls. And those nine-one-one calls could have been for any number of areas in Tehachapi, the whole, the whole mountain. We're getting them all, so. I'd like to mention our five dispatchers by name and give their years of service and honor them today. Yesterday was the start of the week, so it starts from the fourteenth and goes till the twentieth. So keep that in mind if you get a chance sometime this week to stop by and give them a hello and thank them for their service. They are first responders. As of 2020, the nation graciously and rightfully decided to make dispatchers first responders. So as Chief said, they're the first people you talk to, and that's why I believe it's necessary that they were made first responders. So starting off by years of service, Robin Mathiason or Matisson has eight years on, and they were all with the Tehachapi Police Department. Jessica Fager-Monheim, eight years with the Tehachapi Police Department. Patty Hawke, two years with the Tehachapi Police Department and five years total. Elizabeth Narvise, one year with the Tehachapi Police Department. And Sabra Villarreal, one year with the Tehachapi Police Department. So I just wanted to take the time to introduce them by name and ask that you all take the time to honor them as well throughout the week.
Thank you.
So we have two of five, and as the nature of the beast is with first responders, you can't get them all together. Because they're working nights or trying to sleep.
Okay, eyes, eyes this way, please. Okay, now let's work our way here. Pass. And Claudia. And I'd like to invite the rest of the department to come up and show support. Come on in here for a photo with your team. And I have you guys angled this way if you can.
Which way?
Looking upwards of me. All right, guys, eyes right here. Perfect. Thank you very much.
You or Carrie Anne or whoever put up the...
And the second item is, we're going to ask for another proclamation. And thanks to young men that you're going to hear from, Donovan Brown. He reached out to me through our social media and said, hey, April is Autism Awareness Month. Is there something that we could do? And so he and I exchanged some messages back and forth, and we said, absolutely, this is, this is what we'd, we'd like to do. So April is National Autism Awareness Month, so we're requesting Mayor Davies and council to reclaim the month of April, 2024, as National Autism Awareness Month, as it is across the country. According to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, autism has been identified in one in thirty-six children. Autism spectrum disorder is reported to occur in all racial, ethnic, and socio-economic groups. People with ASD often have difficulty with communication and interaction with other people. They have restricted interests, repetitive behaviors, and have symptoms that affect their ability to function in schoolwork and other areas of life. And I've got two guests that are going to speak. Join us first, Timore Torres. Timore, if you could come up, please. She is a family resource specialist from Hearts Connection, and that's help, encourage, advocate, resources, train, support Kern County. And then after her, Donovan Brown, who lives here in Tehachapi, will share.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for this invitation to speak. My name is Timore Torres. I'm here wearing two hats tonight. First, I'm a parent of a son who has autism. My son Donovan, there are two Donavons here tonight. My Donovan is now a young adult, but he grew up here in Tehachapi, going to local schools. I spent two decades advocating on his behalf, making sure that he received the services necessary to help him in his education, to graduate with a high school diploma, along with obtaining other supportive services and therapies. It was not always easy advocating for that support, but it paid off. He is now pursuing his dreams by attending an animation studio academy for students who have autism in Sherman Oaks. Secondly, as stated, I'm a family resource specialist for Hearts Connection, which is a nonprofit that serves Kern County. I've been assigned specifically to serve the families in Tehachapi and Cal City. I run support groups for parents, special family events, I help parents find resources, and we provide IEP assistance to families, supporting the parents as they advocate for their child. As stated, autism is a developmental disorder that affects how people interact with others, communicate, learn, and behave. The current numbers were already given. When my son was diagnosed back in 2003, the number was one in one hundred and fifty, and it's now one in thirty-six. Contrary to what some would say, it is not just due to better diagnosis. Any teacher who's been in the education field for decades can tell you, they did not see this in their classrooms in the past. There is no cure for autism, but with early intervention, proper services, support, and resources, individuals can't over, can overcome some of their obstacles and have improved outcomes, potentially leading to a better quality of life. It is called the spectrum for a reason. While there are many similarities, it affects everyone differently. You can find individuals who are very high functioning. They can attend college, have successful careers and relationships. On the other end of the spectrum, you will find individuals who have more severe autism. Some may be non-verbal and have behaviors and needs that are hard for families to manage, and some may need lifelong care. And then you will find individuals in between, all along the spectrum. The saying that it takes ability to raise a child is very true, and especially with autism. It requires support and professional help. The earlier that intervention is obtained, the more chances of success. Different levels and amounts of supportive services are required for each individual. When schools and agencies fail to provide the appropriate support and services, those chances of success dwindle. Individuals who have autism are at higher risk for decomization due to vulnerability, and they are also more likely to have an encounter with law enforcement than non-disabled individuals. There are studies out there that cite various statistics. Some of them are very alarming, and sometimes those encounters do not go well if law enforcement officers have not been trained on how to recognize and how to interact with an autistic individual. It is so important that we not only accept individuals with autism with inclusive opportunities for their growth and success, but that we are also promoting awareness in the community. I am grateful for this opportunity and for our police chief, Chief Standridge, for his support and for this city's interest in promoting autism awareness and acceptance with this proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, guys. How are you guys doing?
Good to be here, sir.
So I have my phone, or I have my speech on my phone, so I'm going to read it from there.
Okay.
Pull it up real quick. And I hope you guys are all having an awesome day so far. So, good evening, everyone. Today, I stand before you to shed a light on a matter close to my heart, Autism Awareness Month, and why awareness is crucial, particularly in our community. Just a few weeks ago, I found myself in a distressing situation. In the midst of my, of an autistic meltdown, I had to call law enforcement for assistance. However, instead of receiving support and understanding I need, that I needed, I encountered a response that was not only insensitive, but downright alarming. These experiences unfortunately are not isolated incidents. They reflect a broader issue of misunderstanding and lack of awareness surrounding autism. Imagine being compared to a generic brand of toilet paper by a teacher or being told by the community members that you don't act autistic. These instances may seem minor to some, but they deeply affect individuals like myself who are on the autism spectrum. They highlight the urgent need for education and awareness in our society. Autism is not always visible, and it manifests in different, differently in each person. It's not just about repetitive behaviors or social challenges. It's a spectrum that encompasses a wide range of strengths and challenges. By fostering awareness, we could create more of an inclusive and supportive environment for individuals with autism. So why is autism awareness important in our town? Because it is creating a community where everyone feels accepted and understood. It's about recognizing and celebrating the unique contributions of individuals on the autism spectrum. It's about ensuring that no one feels marginalized or invalidated because of their neurodiversity. As we commemorate Autism Awareness Month, let us commit to promoting, understanding, empathy, and acceptance in our community. Let us strive to create a world where individuals with autism can thrive and fulfill their potential. Together, we could make a difference, and thank you guys for your guys' time, and I really do appreciate you guys taking your time to listen to what we have to say about autism awareness, and you guys are awesome. Thank you.
Okay, go down a little bit. I'll bring, do a little photo op. Thank you to those, these two, because we've had conversations, myself, it's expanded with Chief Standridge. We're looking at doing an autism awareness event in the coming weeks to draw even more, you know, knowledge, and then also the possibility of using some stickers that other law enforcement agencies have started that talks about this home has special needs. So we're just in the design phase of that. We're working with Chief Standridge. So we're looking at doing some additional things that we can be in support. So just to let you know, it's not just handing off proclamations. It's a little bit more than that. And Mayor Davies, if you don't mind.
No, no, no. I'd like to say something. I've known Timore for a long time, and I want to personally thank her for all that she does. I have a grandson that has autism, and she has helped immensely all of us, me as the grandpa, not understanding it. Couldn't understand when my grandson didn't want to talk. Took the longest time. You know, I'm the, I'm the talker of the family, but. So, but it really, it's not just the children. It's everybody in the family that this affects. And if you're not aware of it, you just think there's something wrong, you know, something wrong with everybody. But personally, I'd like to thank Timore and what she has done for my, myself and my family over the years. And I see the families that she's touched through our church and through the community, and I just personally want to thank Timore for everything that she's done.
Yeah.
Families, everyone that's here for the autism proclamation. Donovan? Two Donavons?
Yeah.
That's easy. I remember everybody's name, Donovan.
All right, you don't, you don't need a lot of people, other people named Donovan.
This way here. And we'll have everyone look, look this way first. Okay, eyes here. Great. A little shift. Eyes.
Wait, can you see everybody?
There we go. Thank you. And you can stay there, and I'm going to move a little bit. That's all of you, so.
Thank you.
Can you send me a picture?
Yes. Okay, we'll move to item three, Consent Agenda. All items listed within the aspect are considered to be routine and non-contributable by city staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion if no member of the council or audience wishes to comment or ask questions. If comment or discussion is desired by anyone, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public address the city council concerning an item before action is taken. Staff recommendations are as shown in CAS. Do we have anybody from the audience that would like to have anything removed from the consent agenda? Council?
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
A roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Chung?
Yes.
Councilmember Power?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Kotan Pogunkoy?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
Five-zero vote, motion carried.
Audience, in oral, written communications, the city council welcomes public comments on any item within the subject matter of the jurisdiction of the council. With respect requested, this public forum be utilized in a positive constructive matter. Persons addressing the council should first state their name and area of residence, the matter of city business to be discussed, and the organization or persons represented. To ensure accuracy of the minutes, please fill out a speaker's card at the podium. Comment directed to an item on the agenda should be made at the time the item is called, discussion by the mayor. Questions for non-agenda items directed to council or staff should be first submitted to the city clerk in written form no later than twelve PM the next, on the Monday preceding the council meeting. Otherwise, response to the question may be carried over to the next city council meeting. No action can be taken by the council of matters not listed on the agenda, except in certain specified circumstances. The council preserves the right, reserves the right to limit the speaking time of individual speakers at the time allotted for public presentations. Do we have anybody for a public comment in the audience? Hello?
Hello. My name is Natalie Latta. I'm a part of Sister Warriors Freedom Coalition. It's good to see you all again. I know we came back, we came up here a few months ago. We spoke to you guys. We just want to come up here and give you guys a quick, brief update on how we've been affecting the community. So far, we've been having our monthly meetings here downtown Tehachapi. We've been coming into space with a lot of new faces. We've been hearing a lot of concerns of what those would like to see in our communities. So much so, we actually got recognized by twenty-three ABC News. We got an interview, and we went to the news, so we had to shed light on the Tehachapi community and what we're all about. We really just want to come up here and invite everybody. We'll, we really encourage women and women of youth to come to our meetings. We have every Wednesday at five-thirty here downtown. We also post on social media, so if you guys need help finding a flyer, I'll be here after the meeting to speak to anybody. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Do we have anybody else here for a public comment? Tori, do we have any written? All right, we'll move to city clerk reports.
Item ten, we're on assistance signature.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay. Okay, public hearing. Mr., our assistant city manager, Corey Costello, would you like to address this?
Good evening, Mayor Davies and council members. Tonight, we will have the authorization of new refuse recycling rates and amended restated franchise agreement with WM. So there's two agenda items on the agenda. We're going to take them here in one staff report and in the public hearing as well. So I'll start first on the rate side. As the council is aware, we continue to work through the state mandated regulations surrounding SB thirteen eighty-three, organic recycling programs for residents. The ordinances establishing such services have already been approved by council. The city's been working through regulatory and compliance issues with Cal Recycle and navigating a complex commercial implementation, food rescue, and waivers program with our contract holler WM. As the council is aware, on February twentieth, the results of a waste and recycling rate study to meet the requirements of SB thirteen eighty-three, which includes residential organic recycling, was approved by the council. In addition, council authorized the start of the Proposition Two Eighteen notification and protest period for the new rates scheduled to take effect on July one, twenty twenty-four, with a five-year authorization period for the Consumer Price Index increase annually. So the rate payers were notified via direct mail with a notice explaining both the new rates, the unfunded state mandates requiring the organic services, and the process to submit a valid protest for the rates. As required by law, public notice was also published in the Tehachapi News on March twenty-seventh and April third. Protests were accepted at city hall, addressed to the city clerk. Tonight, we're also holding a public hearing to accept any valid requests from property owners. The city of Tehachapi currently has three thousand one hundred and seventy active accounts, meaning the city clerk will need to verify one thousand five hundred and eighty-six valid protests to prevent the council from adopting the proposed rates. As previously mentioned, the proposed rate increase is eleven dollars and twenty-three cents a month for residential customers for their most utilized service. Other increases are attached in the attached rate sheet, which is part of the new franchise agreement. The most common changes in service will include the third organic cart issued to residential customers, along with the addition of commercial recycling carts or bins, depending on the volume. As the state of California is no longer allowing mixed recycling and revenues to be sorted at the materials recovery facility, it's now requiring those to be sourced separated at the business. The complete rate structure, rate structure also sent out to customers and rate payers is attached in the franchise agreement. So the fiscal impact of this portion, based on the number of the accounts and the cost of the service verified by both WM and which MSW consultants deem to be justified for delivering those services and accepted by the council in February, the new rates will generate an additional six hundred ninety thousand seven hundred and forty-one dollars for fiscal year in twenty twenty-five. All those funds, except for the city of Tehachapi's ten percent franchise fee, would be remitted to WM per our franchise agreement. The requirements of SB thirteen eighty-three allow for jurisdictions to utilize the Prop Two Eighteen process to request rate payers to cover the cost of these services. The law requires jurisdictions to provide these services no matter the outcome of the process. In the case of a successful protest by rate payers, or should the council not adopt the proposed rates, the general fund will be required to recover the six hundred ninety thousand seven hundred and forty-one dollars for the coming fiscal year due to the estimated CPI increase and projected growth of the city. That number is estimated to increase to seven hundred ninety-three thousand in fiscal year twenty twenty-six, nine hundred and sixty-five thousand, two ninety-seven in fiscal year in twenty twenty-seven, one million one hundred and forty-nine thousand in fiscal year twenty twenty-eight, and one million three hundred and forty-six thousand seven fourteen in fiscal year in twenty twenty-nine. The estimated total impact of the general fund for not adopting the proposed rates is four point nine million dollars over the next five years. As previously mentioned, the fees collected are remitted to WM for their, for providing their services, money to the city's ten percent franchise fee, which is used to cover administrative billing and state reporting costs. WM also has payments they must make to the county current for use of the tipping fees, bin fees, and such at the landfill as well. The Refugees Recycling Fund is anticipating a thirty-five thousand dollar deficit. The current fiscal year, once approved, the new rates are projected to leave the Refugees Recycling Enterprise Fund with a one hundred and eleven thousand dollar surplus in fiscal year in twenty twenty-five, which is estimated to increase to two hundred and ninety-two thousand by fiscal year in twenty twenty-nine, roughly balancing out to about five percent a year in reserves. As we previously discussed, we, our consultant was pushing for more of a twenty, twenty-five percent, which is sort of standard for enterprise funds. However, A, we didn't want to pass that cost along to customers, but since we have pretty much a straight contract minus some administrative time, we don't own any assets. We don't have depreciation. We don't have a lot of maintenance issues. That is on our franchise holler. So we, we lobbied to keep that at about five percent. So lower than most enterprise funds, but enough to, to pay the bills and make sure we have some money in that fund in reserve. So at this time, I'd like to ask the mayor to open the public hearing. I would request, for the city clerk's sake, names and addresses to confirm validity of the protest, and the city clerk can give you a current tally of submitted valid protests.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open a public hearing.
Okay, so we received twenty valid protest letters. We did a public hearing notice in the Tehachapi News on April third, and then the Prop Two Eighteen notice went out to customers on February twenty-second.
Received public comment. Okay, do we have any public comment from the audience?
A lot of protest.
Oh, protest, I'm sorry.
She, she said we had twenty.
We have what, about twenty?
Do we have any here? No, that's in, say, public comment.
Yeah. Do we have any public comment regarding this item?
We do have one person who turned in a speaker card.
Okay.
Melissa Foles.
Melissa, would you like to come? Welcome.
I haven't seen you guys in a long time.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm actually not here to protest. I, when the, when the boom went up, I contacted Waste Management to see if I could get a bin, because I wanted to put my organic waste in a bin. And they said they weren't allowing it for residents, that only in Tehachapi they were doing businesses. So when I saw this in the paper, I was so happy. Because, I mean, this is what we really need. There's so much waste, and it's a really great way to help the environment and, you know, minimize the waste that happens at Tehachapi. And I'm all for it, so I just wanted to let you guys know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public comments? See then?
Close the hearing.
Yeah, close the hearing. Cory?
Okay, and we'll take that action here in just a moment. I want to get to the amended restated franchise agreement. As part of these new services and new rates, staff in our contract holler WM found it necessary to draft an amended and restated agreement between the two parties, increase state responsibilities, things that we have to do now that weren't in our previous franchise agreements, so I want to make sure those were all captured. The following changes were proposed by the city and accepted by WM, just some of the highlights of the franchise agreement. Term, the new agreement will be valid for five years from the implementation date, with an automatic renewal for five additional years in July of 2029 if either party does not wish to exit the agreement. This is the change from the assumed agreement that WM took over from Ben Sanitation, which was a 20-year sort of agreement that rolled annually, so at the end of every year, you start the 20-year clock again. And so that was a little long, in our opinion, and so we kind of went with more of the industry standard here on this five-year, with a rolling five-year term. Customer service, we've been able to establish a really good system the last several years in relation to contacting City Hall, also using our request tracker on our website, which WM has access to and is able to fulfill those requests rather quickly. So we put those online and phone service requests in. The agreement includes those provisions of 48-hour response time to either customer request directly, or a customer request submitted first service by city staff. Sometimes I'll call City Hall and we'll go ahead and fill out in, on their behalf, the request tracker, because then it goes to the responsive parties at WM, and they follow up with the customer and let us know that they followed up as well. So it's actually a system that's worked really well over the last several years. Resolving the disputes, this has not been an issue in the last few years, but the city reserves the right to withhold payments to WM for billed services to customers should customer service issues go unresolved. The provision in the contract now includes the city manager's authority to withhold payments until a time when the parties can discuss resolutions and the service issues are properly addressed and resolved. Reporting, the new requirements for reporting in the state of California, the variety of new laws, including SB 1383, are also included in the new agreement. The agreement defines under the guidance of state law which party is responsible for emitting reports to the state, including the information required in the city's annual report to CalRecycle. And then the Consumer Price Index, Section 53755 of the Government Code allows for annual increases based on the Consumer Price Index, along with capitalization methodology for a period not to exceed five years. This process is currently in place with our current franchise agreement and will, and is included in the amended and restated agreement. The new rate sheet is attached as well. I want to point out a couple of things that look like significant increases, and I'll explain them a little bit. We already talked about the residential cart services, adding the third bin. Commercial cart services also has been mentioned, but we're having to add a recycling cart as we can no longer sort that recycled material at the MRF. It's considered a dirty MRF, and we have to make it clean, so we have to source separate the recycling. So there is an increase there, due in part to the fact that the, it's the efficiency of the roof when you're trying to collect carts inside of a business district, as opposed to when it's on your streets and they're going down and getting 100 cans in an hour. It's, it's a lot less, so your labor costs are higher on that. In addition, there was a question regarding the additional 96-gallon residential refuse cart, which is billed by Waste Management. So as a resident, you get your three standard carts from the city. We bill water, sewer, and trash together. If you want additional recycling carts, additional trash carts, those go through a Waste Management account. Now, that previous rate in the Prop 218 notice was around $6.80 a month. It's now listed here at 10.24. The reason behind that increase was that was a very low rate. Matter of fact, the additional cart was costing less than your actual first cart, because that was a rate assumed from Ben Sanitation, and this is the first time we've gone through the franchise base rates and allowed them. So they actually doing a study, this is the actual cost of that service. So for the last several years, that service has essentially been subsidized by Waste Management, because they assumed an old additional cart rate and didn't have the authority through us to raise that other than the CPI increase. So that's why it looks like a, a big jump from the six to the 10.24, but that actually rate was way lower than it probably should have been, because that was the rate that they assumed. So even prior to WM taking it, it looks like Ben Sanitation had been kind of subsidizing that second cart as well. So now that WM had the opportunity through our rate study to see the actual cost of providing the service, the additional cart is 10.24, and if you average it out to that 33.91 a month, that would be about the cost of your first trash cart anyway. So that's why that increase was there as well. So that's part of the additional services, and the rest of them are listed there on the commercial side as well. So those are the, the highlights of the restated franchise agreement, and this also allows it to, to clean it up, and this is a much more robust agreement than what was assumed previously by our, previous contract holler prior to the buyout. So a recommendation tonight is to adopt the resolution authorizing the new refuse and recycling rates following the Proposition 218 process, and authorizing per our franchise agreement with WM, a Consumer Price Index increase not to exceed five years, and to approve the attached amended and restated franchise agreement with WM, doing business as USA Waste of California, and authorize the city manager and city attorney to sign.
Do we have any public comment on Mr. Cory's statement? Anybody on council?
I do have a question. So thank you for clearing that, Cory, for that additional cart. Now, my question is in the future, is that the, the future increase will go along with or coincide with other rates increase?
So it'd be, so every year?
Because, I mean, the reason that I'm saying is, I don't think this is subject to Prop 218.
Right.
Because we are directly, customer is directly dealing with Waste Management.
Yeah, that's, that's one of those kind of gray area questions in the 218 process. I see Tom shaking his head. We've gone around this circle a lot. There are some, there are some cities that believe, well, I have a contract holler, so hey, what they charge you is what they charge you. In our case, we do touch at least the initial billing money, and so we feel the 218 process is appropriate. And what we normally do is it's usually, and, and, and you can correct me, but it usually is just the CPI for even their additional billed services under, try to keep it on one rate sheet. But it's kind of a gray area, but really to keep it more transparent, we keep it in the 218 process, so our five-year window. And that's why this hasn't really been touched in a while, the additional cart, because it was a.
So that means this will, the increase will go along with CPI?
Yes, yeah. And every year around.
Same as others. Because this time, you know, the reason that I was asking is just jump to 50%.
Yeah.
I understand for the jumping of $33.91, because that's absolutely necessary.
Yeah.
For a city cannot put out for some, someone else's trash that is required by the state of California.
Yeah.
You know, then I get it, but because of the, the extra bin, because just to share the history, I used to pay like $40 a month with the bins.
Right.
Now I'm paying $82 a year, I mean, $40 a year, and now $82, and now it's jumping to 100, over 120 a year now.
Yeah.
So that's why.
And a lot of the times too, in those billing periods, I just hate to use this term, but times were simpler in the trash, in recycling world, and it got very complicated due to what the state has mandated us to do. So yes, it certainly has. Now, this was a kind of a one-time jump, because they needed to actually study what that cost. These are all of the costs now, and so they'll be stuck into the CPI, which usually about May, we receive like the request, and then the coming year, and then it's already authorized to the 218 process for the next five. So we'll be doing this again towards the end of fiscal year 2029, so.
Is there any other comments?
I have a question.
Yeah.
You were stating that if this fails, you had enough citizens saying, we're not going to have this, even though the state's mandating it, then the, the general fund would make us pay anyway.
Yeah.
Which is still the citizens paying. It was at about $600,000 for this per year service. Now, the, the increments beyond that each year are stepping up pretty high. Was that with a penalty involved?
No, this was, this was a sort of generic percentage. It was used as two things. It was the city's sort of historic 2% a year growth rate, so obviously we're adding in more accounts. And so those accounts, if they were protested tonight, they would, we would not be able to raise those rates either. So even then, when someone coming in new would be paying an old rate, which we would then subsidize. So it increases, so there's the city's 2% rate, and then there's also kind of a, a blanket 5% CPI, that was a safe number. Some years it's 2%, some years it's, I think this year it's 3.8%. And so that 5% number was to cover a couple of things, cover both WM's Consumer Price Index and then our administrative costs as well on our, on, to deliver the services. So it could be, could be less than 5%, but that was generically applied. But also applied was the growth rate over the next five years. So if you're looking at this, it says, it's basically expecting the city to be potentially 10% bigger depending on averages. So a lot of this was just done, and it's in the rate study.
Right.
We presented, and it was averaged out at 5%.
All right, just so everyone knows, it's going to be spread over more people. That, that cost per service of $600,000 this year.
Yes.
700 next, eight, nine, a million. It's going to be spread across a lot more people, so each individual will see whatever the CPI is.
Will see the CPI, yes.
Or the, okay, just so everyone's aware.
Yeah, it looks like a big number on paper, but when you factor in the growth rate into it, so it could or could not actually be that.
Yeah.
All right, if I have nothing else, I'm going to close the hearing.
It's been closed.
So.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, so now I need a motion to adopt a resolution adopting the solid waste and recycling rates.
I make motion to adopt the resolution as Steph presented.
I'll second it. A roll call vote please.
Councilmember Chung?
Yes.
Councilmember Power?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Proten, vote in court?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
Five zero vote, motion carried.
Item 11?
Yes.
Okay, item 11, Cory?
So you just, we need to vote on that one also.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, so the next, the second recommendation was to approve the amended restated franchise agreement with WM.
Okay, so we don't, we've already had comments on, so we're just.
Right, so just to vote.
Okay, so we need to vote on item 11. Roll call vote please.
Motion to approve item number 11.
Yes, okay.
Second.
Okay.
Councilmember Chung?
Yes.
Councilmember Power?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Proten, vote in court?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
Five zero vote, motion carried.
I feel a little curveball to you tonight. You handled it all right. You filed it off. You fought it off.
Okay, item 12.
All right, item 12 is a surplus land act exemption and authorization for real property negotiator. So the city of Tehachapi owns a pair of parcels on C Street right across the way here from the PD parking lot, of the former Oak Tree Medical Center building on the corner of C and Mill Streets. During the active operation of Oak Tree Medical Center, the city leased these lots on an annual basis to allow for additional parking for customers of the medical center. They're very tiny lots, and so they would just pay an annual lease. Last year, Oak Tree Medical moved locations and the building was listed for sale. Recently, the building was purchased by a new ownership group. We're considering uses for the building. As part of that, the ownership group is requesting that instead of leasing the small parcels, the city of Tehachapi consider selling those parcels to them and assist the streamlining of their operation and ownership of the entire site. Considering the small size of the parcels, one is .03 acres, and one .04 acres, and the minimal amount of lease revenue generated by the parcels, and the ability to assist with an investment in our community, staff has no objections to this option. Staff has evaluated the parcels for their potential to be used for city worker operations and has determined the parcels are not suitable for the city's use because of their small size. The California Surplus Land Act has several requirements when a public agency wishes to dispose of excess property. Assembly Bill 1486 was adopted in 2020 and amended the Surplus Land Act, which now requires up to 150-day period during which a public agency must consider proposals from developers to build affordable housing on surplus land. However, there's an exemption within the law that allows for certain small properties, specifically less than one half acre, to be declared by the governing body. In this case, the city council has exempt surplus land, provided that an adopted resolution made in the declaration is forwarded to the California Department of Housing and Community Development for confirmation prior to the disposition of the parcels. The act provides that the city may dispose of exempt surplus land without further regard to the requirements of the act, except for the requirement to notify HCD. As we stated, the description of the two properties, APN 04007008 and APN 0400703, are attached in this report. They're located right here along C Street, near the corner of C Street adjacent to the commercial property in Escrow, and were previously leased to the property owner for parking usage. The Government Code defines exempt surplus land as that that is less than one half acre in area or 21,780 square feet and not contiguous to land owned by a state or local agency that is used for open space or low to moderate income housing purposes. Further, the property must not meet any of the conditions set forth in the Government Code, Section 54221F2, which includes being listed in the National Register of Historic Places. The parcels that meet any of those conditions are not contiguous to land owned by a state or local agency that's used for open space, low to, income, low to moderate income housing purposes, and are less than one half acre. The property proposed, as mentioned, one is 1,876 square feet, one is 1,520 square feet. They do not also meet the minimum building standards required in the G4.5 Neighborhood Center Zone in the City of Tehachapi zoning code. Fiscal impact on this item, the prospective buyers should provide a land appraisal to determine fair market value of the properties prior to the finalizing the sales term. The final lease payment received in February of 2022 was about $2,800. The lease was not paid in 2023 as the previous business was relocated. A sale price is expected to be similar to the lease price, but subject to appraisal. So staff recommendation tonight is to adopt a resolution identifying APN 0400703 and APN 0400708 as exempt surplus land by the city of Tehachapi and authorize the mayor to sign, and also second to authorize real property negotiator to dispose of the properties pursuant to the above-mentioned California Government Code, following approval of the exemption by the California Department of Housing and Community Development. That concludes my report.
Thank you Cory. Do we have any public comment on this item? You none? St, council?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I'm so happy to see this transaction happening.
It was a lot of work for $2,800.
Yeah, it was a lot of work, and reminders, and, you know, and your CPI, and, and, you know, Steph kind of all scared, was like, you know, by missing it, by, you know, a few days, not billing. So I think it makes much more sense for the building owner to own that little part of their parking lot.
Yeah, and I think their eventual plans, they want to make it all one parcel. They're actually sitting on a couple of parcels where the current building's at, and so I know their plan is to make it one parcel, they'll clean up everything in the future, clean up title and all that good stuff, so.
I'm telling you, Steph will be very happy.
Any other? Go ahead.
How long have we owned those two parcels?
You know what?
It's forever.
The original deed is probably.
I'm not sure how we even received.
Parts of the paper, who knows?
Why are they in our, on our name?
I was trying to think in my mind before this was even built.
The only thing I can think of is.
There was a house.
Decades. Yes. It could have been potentially as a thought before they cul-de-sac the road, maybe that was going to crunch through. This was one of the, you know, Tehachapi Fruit and Land Company that owned most of the valley, you know, back way, way, long, long time ago. That's where it came from, so.
So do they still, does Tehachapi Fruit and Land Company still own that triangle?
No, that's old, that's like a really old parcel map that's on the county site, so.
So the yellow line does extend down to where that triangle is?
Yes.
I'm going, that's another odd little.
Yeah, there's two really odd shaped lots. All I could think of was potentially was a rural thought at one point. Before they probably took the track behind it.
It'd be nice to have a business in there.
Yes, yeah, it's, yeah, and it's an opportunity to assist in investment in the community. And we're not giving it to them or selling it to them, and it cleans everything up for all parties and, you know, makes the accounting staff have one less.
It makes sense.
It does, it does. Clean things up.
Do we have other comments?
I'll make a motion that we approve.
I'll second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Chung?
Yes.
Councilmember Power?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro tempel and Corr?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
Five zero vote, motion carried.
Thank you. Thank you, Corey. Hello, Mr. Marsh.
Good evening, Mayor Davies and councilmembers. The item I have for you today, tonight, is regarding our street sweeper for Public Works. In June of 2019, the city initiated or started a 60-month, five-year lease on our existing street sweeper. This lease expires in June of this year, and the Public Works Department was looking at our situation and decided that we need to get a new sweeper. Our sweeper has become pretty unreliable, not to mention that the lease is expiring, and so we really need to look at getting a new one. So we formed a selection committee comprising myself, Tyler Napier, Markus Kurial, and Jason Sanderson, and we evaluated a lot of different options. The process that we went through for that is we used or leveraged our cooperative purchasing agreement that we have with Sourcewell. So Sourcewell, if you recall, we've used that a few times when we were purchasing equipment, but they're nationwide cooperative that allows government agencies to take advantage of nationwide competitive bidding processes without having to go through those processes ourself. So Sourcewell goes, we're a member of, and they go through the bidding process for all different kinds of equipment and vehicles and office furniture, all kinds of stuff. And so we're a part of that. We approached them and they gave us a list of eight potential sweeper vendors to talk with. We, we sent out a, what we call a request for demonstration to all eight of those vendors, and we received interest from two of them. Two of them said that they could provide a demonstration unit for us, bring it here to Tatchipie and allow for our operator to operate that, for us to see how it works, and then evaluate them based on that, as well as based on their pricing. So after the discussion with the vendors, all the assessments, there was Elgin and Marco, or Hawker and Timco are the actual sweeper vendors, manufacturers that we talked with. So those vendors, we selected the Timco Model 435 as the best fit for Tatchipie. We did talk with both vendors regarding potential lease agreements with them. They both were willing to do that, but in, as usual with leasing, it adds additional cost to the, to the sweeper, and it also provides for, or limits the ability and flexibility to get rid of the sweeper should you decide that, hey, this isn't working out. At least you have, if you own it, you have the ability to sell it. One of the things with our current lease agreement, or the situation we have with our lease is that we're basically stuck with it until June. If we had our choice, we probably would have gotten rid of it about six months ago because of the unreliability and maintenance issues that we've had with the equipment. The other benefit of purchasing is it also gives you the ability to keep it longer. So if you decide, in this case, we had it for five years, if everything was working great and we had owned it, we would have obviously just kept running it and using it rather than replacing it after the lease is up. So our recommendation is that the city council approve the purchase of the Timco Model 435 as outlined in the attached quote, and authorize the city manager to sign the purchase agreement with a total one-time cost of $258,059.55. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Do we have any public comment on this item? Council?
Yeah, I do. First of all, I would like to, I'm glad to see these agenda items because, you know, dealing with the technology bad, sweeper is a pain really in the rear. And I feel for our public work staff. And second of all, I would like to commend our public work staff for keeping our street very clean. This is, it's very well kept, the city. I'm very proud of our city. It's very clean. I like to walk on the street and I have not seen any dirty sidewalk or anything like that, so it's very pleasant. And so I calculated, of course, I, you know, from my background, I just have to use my calculator. And the lease amount for five years was like $211,679. So we will pay that much, you know, for, also if you consider inflation for five years, then it's way more than that. And on top of it, you guys said you've been paying a lot of maintenance costs.
Yes.
And then there is no such thing as salvage value because it's a lease, you're just going to give it back. And I'm sure you'll be happy to give it back, but, you know, there's nothing left. So anyways, you know, to think about it, owning a, this equipment, hopefully, this is as good as, you're much better than the current one. And I'm glad to see that you guys have checked other cities. A lot of times, you get good input by checking other cities' input from them. Because they usually share honest opinions, other than you directly talk to manufacturers or dealers. And so, so I think this is a good idea to, to go this way because not only it's, you know, in a cost effectiveness, but also at the end, I'm sure that life is longer than, you know, the five years, and hopefully. Yeah, exactly. Hopefully. And, and my last question is, is there any warranty that is given by manufacturer?
Yeah, there's a one-year warranty.
Oh, better than nothing. So, okay, wow, so it's, I'm glad to see that you guys decide to go with the purchasing this sweeper.
Thank you.
That was my question with the warranty. Can you purchase an extended warranty?
We didn't ask about that. I'm sure we could.
Is it something we want to do? So, you know.
The problem, and we saw this with our other sweeper, our existing sweeper, is that they, it works great at first. And the problem is that it gets used so much, and, you know, it's basically 10 hours a day, four days a week, at least. And for the first three or four years, we didn't really have that many problems with our current one. But then it kind of just gets to the point where it's just time to go, that it's time to be replaced. And so unless we got like a five-year warranty or something like that.
That's all right.
Which I think would be exorbitantly expensive.
The other thing would be, at some point with our growth, we may consider a second sweeper so that you're dividing the workload. We'll talk about that in a couple of years.
And reliability, but I might add, you could amend the motion to give us authorization to look into and potentially purchase an extended warranty, should it be reasonable.
If it looks like it's.
Yeah.
So I'll make the motion and then, and then have that stated in there.
You know, when I first became a councilman, I toured the Public Works Department, and the city was renting a, an additional cleaner, a street cleaner, because the one we had on a lease was not functioning yet. So it was very, very expensive, but we needed it with the fall coming and the leaves and the Halloween candy and everything else. It wasn't an option. So I know once, once sometime again, we talked about maybe future smart equipment, where sweepers can have sensors or something like that to determine potholes or road fractures. Is this something that might be on this, or is that down the road as well?
We do actually have that technology already in place, and it's independent of the sweeper. So we, we will be able to move that from our existing sweeper over to the.
Thank you.
This technology that we own.
Fantastic.
So we can take it off and put it on the new one.
Fantastic. Well, it's nice that it's also independent, which means there's less, that's going to go wrong with the machine if it has.
Yeah.
Keep it simple.
How many employees will be trained on this?
So that is part of the, the agreement. We actually will train numerous people, probably about five operators. And then also is included in the proposal is that we will actually send our mechanics to their facility in Waco, Texas, to be trained on how to maintain it. So that's actually, I believe, a three-day training course in Waco, Texas, at their manufacturing facility to go through all the nuts and bolts of, of the machine.
Fantastic.
We're pretty excited about that, yeah. That's a great opportunity.
That is a great opportunity.
All right. My other comment was that I was real pleased to see the personnel that you had in your group to evaluate. Was it just, oh, pick one, you know? You, the operator is the person that knows the things that are breaking down, your mechanics, and all of the three of us, so that was.
Yeah. You did something similar with the previous one as well. This was a little bit more formalized, so.
So for clarification, I'd like the motion to read, like others, where the city manager would have the opportunity to increase the total value by 10% should it be required. In this case, it would be the warranty. So we'll look at the warranty and see if it makes sense. So $258,000 plus the 10% for warranty should Dawn and his staff recognize and agree that would be appropriate.
Some move.
Second.
Do we need to read it now that?
Councilmember Chung?
Yes.
Councilmember Power?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro tempel and Corr?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
So five zero vote with an amendment to the recommendation as stated.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marsh. Item 14, Development Services Director Reports.
Good evening, humble mayor, councilmembers. Sorry. I have a couple of items for you tonight. The first one I'm excited to present to you. This is an excellent example of a cooperative relationship coming to fruition with the Tatchipie Unified School District. And so I'll just kind of begin my presentation by putting out a big thank you to, to Hojat Indazari, their finance manager, and Stacy Larson Eversen, their superintendent, Dr. Stacy Larson, for their instant support of this idea. So staff went and sought the TDA, Transportation Development Act Article III Grant Program from current council of governments for about $240,000 to. And the goal of that program was to build pedestrian facilities from the southern end of the high school, where the sidewalk ends right abruptly at the southern edge of the high school, down to Pinion, where we now have bicycle lanes on the new Pinion extension, and we also have some, they're dirt paths, but they're pretty functional. I don't know if you guys drive out there, it does much, but there are people that are walking up and down the road, off, outside of the road, so it's safe. And, and so we recognized the need to kind of fix that little gap of pedestrian and even bicycle access. Although it's sidewalk, the functionally bicycles are safer over there than on the edge of the very narrow road that connects those two together. And so we sought this TDA grant and were awarded that amount of money, but we knew it wasn't going to be enough money to build the improvements necessary to get from the southern end of the high school to the intersection there of Denison and Pinion. In fact, that project, our current estimate is about $600,000. So in 2000, when the school was constructed, the school district was facing a deficit to construct that high school. And one of the ways that they value engineered that project to get the high school built, even though they didn't have enough money to build what they originally hoped to do, is they entered into an agreement with this council to defer certain improvements until a later date. That agreement is included in the staff report, and it, and it's very, it's a single line that just says it shall be deferred until the city determines that it's needed. And so we felt like with the construction of Pinion, in particular, that extension, that we've reached a point where we have a demonstrative need to get these two connections made so that students going to and from the high school that might utilize Pinion now have a safe place to be. So went to the school district and said, look, we, we found the first 250. Can you come up with the rest? And received an instant positive response from the school district, and so we began working on an MOU to govern that money exchange. The deal is that we will design and construct the project. We will utilize the TDA funds we have available, and then we will invoice the school district for the remaining funds necessary to construct the project, and they agree to pay within certain terms and timeline. So this is the second time we've had an agreement like this with the school district that successfully resulted in some public improvements. And so excited to, again, to point out the partnership and its effective. In fact, the school district, I went to their board meeting a month and a half ago and received an extraordinarily positive response from the school board thanking us for our efforts to improve the infrastructure around the schools within the city to the safety and benefit of the students and the population who use those schools. So with that as background, my recommendation is that you approve the memorandum of understanding between the City of Tatchipie and the Tatchipie Unified School District to construct the Denison Road widening project adjacent to the Tatchipie High School campus and authorize the mayor to sign. One caveat that I know Greg was about to say was, the agreement also requires them to complete the public improvements on Pinion Street along the front edge of the high school. So from, the high school property extends all the way to Pinion. So that dirt field that's there south of the high school is part of the high school property. And so part of those deferred improvements are both the improvements on Denison, I'm sorry, Greg, I shouldn't have got this in the report, and then, and the improvements on Pinion. So we were clear in these negotiations that they're only fulfilling a part of their deferred obligation to us, and that in the future, we foresee the need to complete the second part, but right now, we don't have a timeline for that. We just want to get the first piece done. So that is my report.
So actually, if I may, that's not what I was going to say. Jay's being very humble. You know, 20-plus years ago, again, I'm kind of underscoring and repeating a bit what Jay said, but I just want to put a point, find a point to this. Tatchipie Unified School District ran out of money, and they didn't build certain elements of the high school. This is one of them, the improvements on Pinion and Denison. So the city ended up agreeing, of course, we had to, and we ended, we formed an MOU. Fast forward 20 years, Jay and his team went and found a quarter-million-dollar grant that's saving TUSD a quarter-million dollars, because they are on the hook for this. And so that's a really good thing for this, the school district and the City of Tatchipie, quite frankly. We've offered to manage it, we've offered to design it, and TUSD is paying the bills here. This is not a City of Tatchipie. We're not writing checks. We're going to get reimbursed for those checks that we write. Nothing's coming out of our general fund, right? And so we're really excited about the school district, you know, agreeing and jumping on board and not pushing back because it is required, it is per our contract with them. But I just wanted to say thank you to Jay and his team for saving this community a quarter-million dollars and receiving a grant from the State of California.
Yeah.
In addition to the Pinion piece.
In the piece, very good. Thank you.
Do we have any public comment on this item? Council?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that TDA, three money well used.
Yeah, we've been very successfully.
Very, very glad to see this project.
That's what's happening on Brentwood. That's TDA Article III money that's building those sidewalks right now, so.
Perfect project for schools and the community.
Thank you.
Good job, Jay.
Excellent job.
I would just comment that maybe you've already done this with the school district, but maybe a letter from, from the mayor saying thank you for the cooperation. We think this, and we are looking forward to the completion of the project and future projects.
There you go.
Something like that, that the mayor could do. Just relay our sentiment, since they received you so, so well, let's return that.
And, and also, they still need to finish Pinion. We'll just make sure they know that. The unfinished piece, but no, we're, we're really good. Jay has fostered a really great relationship with them, and we're looking forward to these improvements.
Fantastic.
I would say that wonderful partnership, the community partnership.
Yeah, it helps when you bring some of the money to the table. That helps a lot. But I, I, you know, I appreciated that there was an acknowledgement from the school board that the city has been spending a lot of effort in the last 10 years improving safety around our schools. Because we have, we've, we've put a focus on that, and I could list five or six projects off the top of my head, and, and so I appreciate that recognition and that partnership that comes from seeing the need for our kids.
Yep.
Need a motion for item 14?
I still move.
I'll second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Chung?
Yes.
Councilmember Power?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro tempel and Corr?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
Five zero vote, motion carried.
Thank you. Item 15, Jay?
Sir, the second item tonight is the Northside Neighborhood Sidewalk Phase III I Street Project Award. So another fund source that we get a little bit of money from every three years or so is the Community Development Block Grant Program. That money, it's a, it's a HUD-funded program, so Housing and Urban Development State Agency. And those funds must be spent within HUD-designated neighborhoods. The city only has one such neighborhood. It is the Single Family Home Neighborhood located north of the railroad tracks where this project is located. These funds cannot be spent anywhere else geographically in town other than in that area, and it is restricted for use to improve the neighborhood, to reduce blight. It is, it is associated with improving the residential quality of that neighborhood because of the income levels that are in that area. So this should be old hat, we, phase three means we've done phase one and two already. be old hat, we, Phase Three means we've done Phase One and Two already, so we have been using the small amount of money that we get through this program to just kind of march block, block by block, and improve and finish the public infrastructure in that area, because we have found, and I think the downtown is the shining example of it, and honestly, this I would count as effectively part of downtown, that when we, we pursue infrastructure, people per, private property owners pursue improvement on their end, and you can generally, you know, bring an entire area up. So, with that in mind, we sought to, to construct sidewalk improvements with curb gutter and handicap ramps on I Street between Green Street and Davis, so a two-block area. We advertised for this project on February 12, and opened only the single bid received on March 26. The bid results are included in the staff report. We have worked with SNH Civil Works before. They did one of the previous phases. I think they did Phase One. They, the only other experience we've had with them is on a project of this scale, pretty small, $100,000 I know. To me personally, that's a lot of money, and in our world, that's a very, very small project, and so, and that project went well. So, in compliance with the Public Contract Code, we reviewed that bid to confirm that it is indeed responsive. The bid was also provided to the CDBG staff at the county of Kern, who administer this program, and they also deemed it sufficient to award. So fiscally, the engineer's estimate for construction was $106,000, so this one we, we nailed at 104,500. That happens every once in a while. And the total project budget was $166,000 in, in HUD money, plus $30,000 of city funds. That's what was budgeted in, in the existing budget, for a total project budget of $196,500. So with this bid at 104, and my recommendation for awarding tonight, we do believe we can complete the project within that original budget. So, I recommend you award the Northside Neighborhood Sidewalk, I Street, Phase Three Project to SNH Civil Works in the amount of $104,500, and authorize the city manager to approve any necessary change orders up to a maximum of 10% of the original contract or $10,450. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Jay. Do we have any public comment from the audience? Counsel?
I have a question, Jay. So, $166,000 CDBG money is allocated annually to the city, right? Is that annual, about three years?
No, it's three years saved up.
Oh, yeah, you're right. Yeah, three years.
Yeah.
And so, and we are not going to use all that money. We do have that amount, the, the money available, right, for us?
Yes, they take the first 20 grand off the top, CDBG does. So, CDBG is a state agency, and we are a member of the county CDBG.
Yeah.
I don't know if this, but.
I understand.
A member of the county CDBG group. So we get what flows first to the county, and then is allocated to the agencies that are members of the county. And so, they take the first 20 or 30,000 off of this 166 to cover the environmental documents, and they're oversight of the project. So it's, we don't get to see every green dollar there. Some of it doesn't make it all, all the way down to us, so.
So I was just curious that if there is any, a lot of times, you know, we do have amendment to the project, so more than likely, we're gonna end up using it, but, you know, it's a perfect word, if we're gonna.
Yeah, if they're gonna save, we'll probably just keep part of the 30,000 in general fund we allocated. So again, but we had a 166,5, we had to do design, which was about 30, 35,000 on this project. There, it's complicated actually. Sidewalks in old neighborhoods is very time-consuming engineering work. Anyway, yeah, so the 30,000 supplements the total budget. You know, if we're fortunate, we'll come in under with the contingency, but if we, if we're, say we're 15,000 under that, we'll just keep the 15,000 and not take it out of the general fund and.
We'll spend all the CDBG money, and if there are any savings, we'll keep our general fund money instead. So the CDBG money is spent first.
And, and I can't really go outside the boundary of the set project without redoing environmental, and so there, there's not an easy way to scale up. So, I'm not sure I'd recommend that anyways, even if we had more money. This is, this all landed right about where we hoped it would when we first came up with this.
I was just curious if there is any money left from CDBG, if they can get carried in the future project.
They'll grab it. No, I, no, we re-budget each time we do the three-year cycle with CDBG. We reset the project, we figure out how much they have, we look at the size of the project and determine how much of our own money to put into it. So, that's a standalone process every three years.
Thank you.
Any other comments, or counsel? I think it's going to really improve, you know, that, that neighbor I was over there the other day visiting some friends, and, you know, it's, it's, of all the town, all the areas in town that needs that.
One block at a time. I mean, we've done H Street, we've done Green Street, now we've done a couple of the intermediate blocks between H and I, and now we're doing this piece. So we'll get in there.
Good, all right. If there's no other, need a motion?
I'll move. I'll move.
I'll second it. We'll call vote, please.
Councilmember Chuck?
Yes.
Councilmember Power?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Pogecourt?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
Five zero vote, motion carried.
Thank you.
Item sixteen, Jay, you're up again.
That's on consent. City manager, city manager.
Oh, well, I thought, okay, item sixteen? Is it item sixteen?
It's already passed.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Mr. Garrett?
Thank you, Mayor Davies. Couple things, and I'd like to have Mr. Budger, Communications Manager, come up to the podium, but I wanted to mention on April 22nd, the first three Tehachapi veterans will be visiting Washington DC, the honor flights, courtesy of the City of Tehachapi taxpayers. So we're really excited about that, and I'm sure that the, the veterans and their, their guardians will be too. So I wanted to, I think that that's coming up here, here real quick. And then, I'm just going to name these, and then maybe you can, Key, you can follow up. So, Love Tehachapi this Saturday is doing a citywide cleanup. So we're really excited. Love Tehachapi is a, is a great volunteer organization. Our Public Works Department and Police Department will be supporting them. We've got trash bags and we'll have a trailer set up so they can deposit those, those bags, and some picker wrappers, and gloves, and those things. And PD will be keeping a close eye on things, making sure that they're safe, but really excited about that. Also, the Chamber of Commerce has a wind fair this Saturday, Meadow Brook Park, so inviting everybody out there. Blood Drive on the 24th at the Tehachapi Vineyard Church. Coffee with the mayor this Thursday, and then walking groups this Thursday also. So please elaborate on all of those, Mr. Budger.
Love Tehachapi for the last several years. They are a volunteer group that's, that's a part of our faith community, that they brought churches together and community volunteers, and they take on projects they want to beautify Tehachapi. So a part of that, we always play the support role. They tell us when they want to do it, and then, thanks to Don's team, we make sure that the safety material is available for them, the pickers, the tools that they're going to need to stay safe, and help beautify Tehachapi. And then Don's team will, has a trailer that they will collect at the end, and go ahead and take care of it being properly disposed of. So they, they've been a great partner for the last several years. On Monday, we'll have Earth, Earth Day, we will be at the Antelope Run, and Tyler Napier from Public Works has got his team geared up to think Earth Day, do cleanup. We're going to work with Tehachapi County Water District, and then community volunteers, and invite people to come out Monday to the Antelope Run at the Valley Boulevard entrance. Join us in this week, clean up Antelope Run. That's something we started three or four years ago. Sandy Chavez asked if we would do it. So it started from the community, and we've kept that as a tradition, and I know, or talked to Sandy, she'll be out there, and we encourage the community to come and join us at 8:30 on Monday as a part of Earth Day. What were the others? We get the, the Blood Drive, we do it every two months. So on Wednesday, the 24th, we'll be at Vineyard Church, and that's another community collaboration. We'll have Houchen Community Blood Bank come up from Bakersfield. We anticipate 60 to 70 Tehachapi community members donating. We've also included local businesses that are going to offer a little, something, a little persuasive, thank you for donating. Houchen had originally come up with some Bakersfield businesses, and I said, "Uh-uh, you're not bringing those up here. We're going to take care of our own local economy and our local businesses." So thanks to the relationship we've built with these local business owners, they're going to offer things to the, to the donors.
Wind Festival this Saturday?
I have nothing on that, sorry.
So it's Greek hikes, I know about, and inviting all the, the kids in the, in the community to come out to that. Coffee with the mayor, and then walking groups on Thursday.
Coffee with the mayor has longstanding tradition. I think it, when we initially launched that, it was the late mayor, Ed Grimes, and it's been a tradition for years. And so, the community has been great coming out. I think Mayor Davies, former mayor, Smith, you guys had great conversations in that role, you know, on Thursdays, Thursday, every month.
People loosen up, they're more at ease over coffee than coming to the podium and.
And the same thing with the walking groups. I have had so many good conversations with individuals about curbs, gutters, sidewalks, weeds, asphalt, airport, retail, you know, different things, and as you walk along for five minutes and you kind of meet up with a different group, and we talked about the swimming pool, you know, when is it going to open, and all those things. So it was just an opportunity for us to continue to communicate how, what we know, what we're doing, why we're doing it, when we're doing it, how we're doing it.
And I think we've, what we've seen with each of these different things that we've done to, to connect with the community, we're seeing different members. It's not the same member of the community that goes to all of these events. These are different people that we're meeting and engaging with. So, similar to what our communication philosophy, to communicate on different platforms to reach as many different people, as we do that with this live outreach in these different platforms, we're reaching more of the community, but we're just kind of going to, and doing the things that they enjoy. So that, in my eyes, they've been very successful.
That's our list. Thank you.
Thank you, Key. Counselmember reports. Mary did that, I'm sorry. Yeah, all right, city man. All right, councilmember reports. Manna, do you have anything?
Nothing. Just lots of curbs and gutters going in around my neighborhood area.
Yeah.
It's looking good, and the park's looking good. Can't wait to go take a peek. Yeah.
Give me a holler, we can go there, but I know trees were delivered today, and so we're still shooting for mid-June ribbon cutting.
Fantastic.
Great. Kudos to the Public Works, the, the concrete work that they're doing, the extra stuff.
Always, yeah, trying to keep ahead of the, the construction crews, the subcontractors, yeah.
I, I guess I have a little report. So some of you may have seen that the mural on Tehachapi Boulevard, the 1915 dance, Green, Green Street Dance, after Valentine's Day, we had a lot of water that went behind the mural, and it started spalling, and about a third of the mural has come off. So there's a group of us, Charles White, myself, Tina Dilly, and Lynn Bennett, who are working together to restore the murals, and, and to get them back into original shape. They should be resealed every three years. They haven't been touched in over eight. So, and unfortunately, we have two that are at risk of being lost this, this year. So, we are starting the process, and I will be giving a presentation on the mural project. We're actually calling it Tehachapi Murals, very simple. Giving a, a presentation on May 1st at the EDC. So, if anyone's interested, ask me later, but we're going to, our goal is to get every mural cleaned and sealed by the end of the summer, and to get the ones that need to be repaired done by July.
Awesome.
August, I'll say August. We'll do it, we'll get it done.
Just commented with coffee with the mayor, I've had a lot of positive things happen. People come and they'll, a little simple thing, it's a pothole in front of their house, and Don Marsh is there, and I bring Don with them, and we all get together, and we talk, and then they comment, they, they call me and say, "Hey, it was fixed the next day. That was so awesome." So it's been really positive, you know. I, I want to call it cocoa with the mayor, because I don't drink coffee, but I guess I can't change that. Yeah, I know, there's caffeine in cocoa too, but. No, but a lot of positive things with that going on, and a lot of things we're doing. I haven't made it out to the walk, walking yet, because I work in Mojave, and it's kind of tough to get here, but I'm trying. But just a lot of positive things going on in town, and all the city staff, and everybody, what's going on, and just positive to, to work here and be part of this.
What, the fence, I'm so sorry, I meant to talk about the fence on Tehachapi Boulevard. Holy cow. So I had to leave town for a family emergency, and I came back, it was like Christmas morning, looking at that beautiful fence. That is backbreaking work, and I can't wait to see it decorated maybe over the seasons. But yeah, beautiful work, really well done, guys.
Don has offered to put up bunting.
Yes.
For the summer, and Christmas lights during the holidays.
Twinkle lights, volunteer, solar-powered twinkle lights.
Don and I have talked about it, because WM is actually going to be donating the, the lights and the bunting.
Did you know that? Thank you.
There you go.
Excellent, excellent work. That is.
Tehachapi awesome.
That is backbreaking work, putting those posts, and, and, good job.
It looks great.
It looks beautiful.
It looks great.
Looks beautiful.
And it's safe.
And that's going to go all the way to the summer, right?
Yes.
Pretty good. All right, if there's something else, we'll adjourn. We're going to go into closed session. If we have anything to report, we'll come out.